Let's please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approve the agenda. Approve the agenda as opposed in accordance with the open meeting on here and place all agenda items on the table for discussion with the addition under lettings number two of the Laserfish. Copier? Printer, scanner?
Document management software.
Document management.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Liljergren. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries approval of the minutes. Special work session meeting of November 20, 2017, and the regular council meeting of November 20, 2017. What is the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Councilmember Lundberg to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries approval of the bills. Checks number 97592 through 97648 totaling $264,491.06. What's the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Knopfler, second by Councilmember Hanson for approval. Any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. President. On page two of the bills where it says traffic signs, we spent $9,182 with Minnesota Park. What was that?
The traffic signs and street lighting, so those are all of our overheads, streetlights, traffic lights, the electric for them.
Okay.
Utility bill.
Oh, that's the electric bill for them, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries awards, donation, presentation, proclamations. We have none. Consent agenda, animal community service advisory board minutes for September 2017, receive. Morrison County Attorney's Prosecution Report, September and October 2017, receive. Public Works Report, October 2017, receive. Sales Tax Review, Schleiner and Wender and Company, receive. What's the wish of the council on the consent?
I'll make a motion to receive the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Gushak. Any discussion?
I noticed in the Schleiner-Werner there was one place that they were auditing that didn't have sufficient data for them. Has anything happened with that?
I was wondering the same thing.
We didn't do anything with it. You know, we're aware of the situation. I don't know.
Didn't know if that one had been a problem before or just a bad month.
We have not audited them before, I don't believe. Or if it has, it's been some time ago. You know, because we just do a random sampling every so many years. So, we'll definitely watch to make sure that if they get chosen again, that, you know, we don't have the same reoccurring situation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries public hearings and lettings. Public hearing 2018, proposed budget informational meeting, receive input. John?
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. As we discuss this mostly, or pretty indepthly into the work session, I'll move fairly quickly through this, but if there's any questions that you have in light of this being broadcast for television purposes, let me know. Feel free to interrupt at any time. Key factors that we had in our 2018 budget, since the time that the preliminary levy was set, we actually looked at the debt service that we needed from our general fund, from the general fund, or the property tax levy. And we actually have determined that with refinancing and debt falling off, that we can reduce that. So, it's actually a $105,000 reduction from the time the preliminary levy was set, and it's more than $200,000 since the debt service that we applied for this year's, you know, for this tax year, taxable collection year of 2017. So, for 2018, that was a significant portion that was reduced. We also received a nice increase in our LGA funds of $75,000. That makes up the probably, the largest single component of our general fund revenue is in local government aid. So, we're now over $2.5 million that we will receive in 2018 for that. Another piece that changed us from one year to the next is that we actually are now putting together a budget for Economic Development Authority because of our business subsidy agreements. Another key component of our budget was that we did renegotiate with our employee unions and are participating in the premium insurance increase. Changed our contract from a fixed percentage base increase to just a flat monthly contribution. It went up 16.11%, so we are taking on a portion of that cost. However, if we looked at this in terms of what the old contract was versus the new contract and what we would have contributed under the old contract, we'd be within $10,000 of that old contract. And in future years, we will be underneath what that contribution would be if the premiums continue to increase. We are pleased to report that there will be no changes to the sewer rates. In the past two years, we've been increasing those significantly on the base charge to raise revenues so that we're ensuring that we're covering our existing debt service costs as well as capital improvement expenses that we had for the year. Happy to report that that's now taking, now in effect and is actually holding true. And we will be operationally sufficient so that we don't have to pull from the improvement funds to cover those costs. So, that rate increase has been effective, and we don't anticipate needing to increase it for 2018. What we will be focusing very closely on is the 2019 complete rehab of the waste plant, seeing the feasibility studies that we had later in, late in the summer or early fall. We're looking at a $17 million project for that renovation, $11 million of which is costs that are eligible for a point source reduction grant of potentially $7 million. So, in the next years, we're going to be applying for those grant resources, and hopefully we receive some of them. And we hope that the project cost, if it's in and around $11 million that we end up having to cover, that would make, fit into the assumptions that we had in the rate increases of the old debt falling off and the new debt coming on, and the right timeframes that we wouldn't need to sufficiently, significantly raise the sewer rates after that point. If we are unsuccessful in acquiring those grants, we will have ample time to know and raise the rates accordingly so that we'd be able to cover those costs. So, we'd likely have some information by the end of next year to make that adjustment for 2019 and moving forward. We do, we are recommending a small increase in the water and base charge and usage charge as well as increase to the multipliers. This has been a phased increase and now moving into a system where we have a multiplier calculation to larger meter sizes. It was planned out to move up this way and with these multipliers. So, the increase to the base for residential properties, you're going to see a very small increase of 40 cents and then 1% on the usage rates. So, really, this is, you know, around a dollar a month, a total impact if you're $5,000 or $5,000 gallon user on average. But for those larger meters, they're going to see a larger increase. However, they're much heavier users of water, so the components of their utility bill are mainly in the usage of that water rather than in the base charge. So, likely, they're not going to notice a significant increase in their total overall utility bill. It's just, but it will be an impact to them. So, then, as I said, this was the, it was a step-based program to bring up those multipliers. So, it's actually, this would be the final year that we're going to increase those multipliers. So, as we move forward in the future, if we need additional revenue for debt service or capital projects related to water, we would just raise the base amount, and then the multiplier effects would go up accordingly. The other piece of this budget is based on many discussions with the haulers. As part of our contract, we would, we do have the opportunity to negotiate what they're requesting for a rate for the following year. Looking at what they gave me in evidence for their tipping fees, we are seeing that the amount that we assumed for their total reimbursement that would be directly related towards covering the tipping fees hasn't in September and October been sufficient to cover those costs. But as we've discussed, this is, this rate can be, is to be set at the next council meeting as part of the fee schedule, and we can talk about it further for that time. And I would prefer to have a longer view of, you know, of those, of that data to look at in terms of making this adjustment. And since we are only seeing two months, it's likely that we could see this carry out over a longer period of time in 2018. With that, I would expect that the haulers would be, if they are still kind of receiving that shortfall, because in our negotiations, we did offer to them that we would cover the tipping fees, even pay for them directly, that we would reimburse them for parts of that, for that cost, basically that lost revenue that they're having and assuming that we're paying them a fee for, that isn't covering it in whole. So, right now, that, what we saw is about 70 cents per month, and they're also requesting another additional 55 cents in the operational increase. I would open this for further discussion at our next meeting when we talk about fees. In terms of its impact to the budget, it wouldn't be a significant, a significant increase. I think we could leave the budget figures as is, just understanding that they're going to be less if we, you know, set the, leave the rates as the same. This is, this is assuming that those rate increases would go through. So, now in terms of the impact to the levy, the other good thing that we have seen, and this is, I want to preface this as, this is our best guess to the estimate of what the net tax capacity, the market value rates are going to be, because those numbers aren't even set until after the boarded trustees go in. So, there's all, this constant flow and adjustment of those rates. But based on the truth and taxation form that went out to everybody and the preliminary tax rate that we set, we are anticipating an increase to the net tax capacity as well as the market valuation. So, the county is seeing that property values are going up in our city. So, falling back into what makes up the component of the levy, part of it is for our general fund. So, we have a total expenditure amount, dollar amount that we expect to approve for the general fund. We have other revenue sources from local government aid, fees, other intergovernmental reimbursements that get applied, and then you take the difference. So, for what we have, we're proposing for 2018 for the general fund is $2,172,000. The other components of that levy are EDA. That's at $75,500. The Fire Relief Association, this is a reimbursement of their, or a contribution towards their retirement pensions of $5,000, and for our Parking Improvement Fund, $30,000, as well as the debt service total that we have for the levy. And that amount is $1,411,250. So, when you add those all up together and then look at it in terms of what it was, where it was from last year to this year, it's actually a 1.34% increase from last year operationally. However, when you look at dividing that back into the net tax capacity, the tax rate would, we're assuming is about a 1% decrease. So, now I want to just be clear again, because you're, we're decreasing the tax rate doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to see a decrease in your total city taxes that you're paying. That's going to be based on the valuation of your home. So, if your home value went up, your amount that you're going to be paid is going to be, you know, a percentage of that tax rate. So, if it went up more than a certain amount, you're likely going to see an increase. If it stays the same, then you're going to see a decrease around that 1%. So, but I would say with much confidence that you're going to see a decrease from what you're, what you're getting on your preliminary tax report, because they will likely make very little changes to that valuation that you're seeing on your truth and taxation statement versus what you're going to actually pay in your tax statements in 2018. So, this is the breakdown of what the utility rates are assumed for. This is also going to go into the fee schedule, so while these are, these are what we assuming, are assuming for the budgetary purposes and determining the revenues. However, they are subject to change at the next meeting when we talk about the fee schedule. The water increase, as you can see, is in there. Sewer is the same. Storm sewer is also the same. Recycling, there was a negotiated 20 cent increase for this coming year as part of the contract. And then garbage, there, we did, in terms of that weight, that 70 cents is on the average 64 gallon cart user, so it is a proportionate amounts for the different cart sizes. In terms of the total budget expenditures, breakdown of what you see is we're up about, you know, $600,000 from our approved budget from last year, but we're actually increasing from what was requested, but most of that is in the water and wastewater. Actually, the water is partly due to the rate increases and what we've seen in terms of meeting those expectations and costs and having the new debt service come on for the first phase of the rehab. And then the wastewater is actually an assumption in a recalculation of the actual consumption used. We're assuming some more conservatively than what we ultimately ended up, and it actually looks like we're going to be pretty, pretty close to what last year we're. And we were doing the preliminary, we're assuming even lower consumption than what we had. So, with that, we had lesser expectations in terms of overall costs. Likely, again, with garbage and recycling, that there is an increase to that, but likely it would not have an impact to our budget, because that's a lot, very much a cash-in and cash-out fund. And unless we're going to be changing the admin rate, it isn't going to impact the other, the other money that we're going to, we'd either transfer in or out of that, out of that fund. With the golf course, again, that's another one that we'll take a very close look at in terms of rates. We did see lower than expected revenues this year specifically into greens fees. Kind of the key contributors to that is we lost two pretty significant tournaments this year because they rotate to do different courses. So, likely, we'd see that revenue come back to us when they come back and to our golf course to host their tournament. But unfortunately, it was, we didn't have information to indicate to us what that expected loss could be. So, now we do, and we will be able to kind of accommodate for that moving forward in future years. This slide's more of a breakdown. Apologize for the, for the small figures that we see, but really just trying to show where we are at for our preliminary estimations and where we're ending up with in terms of our final counts for the budgets, based on different departments within the general fund. So, in terms of information of where do your property taxes go? Like I said before, it's broken up into the amount that we need to balance the general fund, amount that we dedicate for debt service, parking, fire relief, and EDA. So, 59% of it is towards that balancing. The general fund, 38% right now is into the debt service. And of that debt service, it's really, as we've refinanced things and saved some money on interest over time, we've, it's really down to a core of street improvement projects that we've had, in that we are going to see this precipitously decline unless we want to take on added debt service projects. But if we stay within whatever amount that we debt service for, or that we agree to spend for that project will likely be, if we continue doing that amount, would likely be the average debt service that we'd pay. So, for example, if we did $1 million debt service every year moving forward, we'd see about $1 million worth of debt service that we'd have to allocate for the levy at that time. It's just a way that conveniently the numbers figure out. In terms of your tax classification, this is just trying to show you what the rates change. In blue, way at the bottom is a residential homestead, a property valued at $100,000. Really, very small impact to what the rates were between 2016, 17, and 2018. Likely, you'll see about a 10, potentially a $10 decrease if your valuation stayed the same. The commercial in the green is for a two, estimated at $250,000. And there, you'd see a decrease of less than $100 from the previous year, but more than $200 potentially from your preliminary tax statement. And then industrial property, just throwing in the million dollar figure, just to try to show you a gauge of what the overall impact is. I mean, we're really been very consistent in terms of our costs and versus what the market valuation increases have been. So, really, it's staying pretty similar in terms of year to year. And again, this is, this last slide just kind of shows how that impact carries out on the grander scale. The number on top of the blue bar is the net tax capacity. And in order to calculate the tax rate, you take the amount that your total levy is divided by the net tax capacity, and then that number in white following the red line is actually, is actually the tax rate, as best as we can estimate it based on figures that were given from the county and other informational sources. So, with that, that is all I have for the budget presentation.
Open up for public input at this time. Freedom from the public. Seeing none, 7:56 will close the public hearing. Do we need action?
No action. No, all the rest of the action in terms of levy will all happen in the resolution. So, now would be, you know, a time if you had any modifications that you wanted to see happen into the, into the budget from what we're presenting. I would recommend that we bring those up for discussion now, so that I'd have time to prepare and show you what the impacts could potentially be when we talk about them in terms of the resolutions. But otherwise, no action needed at this time.
Did we have any major adjustments we want to make? Okay. Laserfish document?
Yes, this is a piece I was actually budgeted for in previous years and carried forward as a capital improvement purchase. Laserfish is a document management software solution, and with this purchase, there's also would be a made, a large-scale document scanner. There's a lot of different things that we can do with this, but one of the primary functions that we would utilize is to take all paper documents and digitize them. So, this is to help digitize all of our historical documents now that we've kind of moved to more of a digital format in our agendas and council packets and that information. But we'd also be able to take this and move this throughout, utilize this throughout for all paper resources, basically take any paper document and turn it into a digital document that's text searchable and more easily recoverable. There's many other forms and applications that we can utilize for this, but it is something that we've had, we have designated for, and it was approved in the budget in previous years. The amount that we did allocate for it was $25,000, and the total purchase price is actually $26,448.65. In order to do the installation, they would require 50% down payment on that, on that charge. So, for this purpose, it's $13,224.33.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Lundberg for approval. Any discussion?
Is the digitizing something that the intern would do? Is that?
Yes, this, yeah, so having the intern would help with being able to take, you know, do some of the bulk and getting some of that work done this coming spring. Another useful piece too is building records can be digitized. So, we have huge files of historic building records that would be much easier to search through and find information regarding those properties, you know, and having that information really at hand when we're going through and doing zoning or other information for that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries old business ordinance number three, seven series, sale of property, properties LLC, introduced on 11/20. What is the wish of the council?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number three.
Second.
I got a motion by Alderman Hurcock, second by Councilmember Hanson to adopt ordinance number three. Any discussion? Hearing none, ordinance caller role plays.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljergren?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.
New business, letter of retirement, Richard slash Dick Haggerty, Assistant Wastewater Supervisor, accept. Greg?
Yes, this evening, in front of you, you have the letter of resignation or retirement from Mr. Haggerty. I'd like to thank him for his service. He's been a great asset to the city. Sad to see him go, but he's looking at retiring at the end of the year here.
How many years?
When did Hennepin close? 99, so it's over 10. Do you have a hand, Lori?
I'm going to say between 10 and 12. I haven't looked yet, but it's, yeah.
What is the wish of the council?
Make a motion to accept with regrets.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Knopfler to accept a letter of retirement. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries interview committee recommendation, police administrative specialist, accept to point. Chief?
On December 1st, John, myself, and Kyle Johnson conducted interviews for the police specialist position at the police department. The position was posted inside the ASPM union, and one applicant, there was one applicant from inside the union, that was Rhonda Monir. She's currently the clerk or the dispatch technician at the police department. I believe she did a great job on her interview. She'll bring, she has a lot of knowledge of the position, of the current position, and she'll bring that knowledge forward into the new position, and it would be our recommendation that we appoint Rhonda Monir to that position.
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to accept that recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Councilmember Liljergren to accept and appoint. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries petition, handicapped parking sign, Zion Lutheran Church. Greg?
Yeah, we received a petition. We received a petition from Zion Lutheran Church to move two of the handicap parking stalls from Fifth Street over to Third Avenue. Tonight, we are asking the council to receive that petition, and then at your next council meeting, we'll bring back a recommendation for that. So, tonight, we are looking for the council just to receive this.
So moved.
Have a second? I have a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Lundberg to receive the petition. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries planning commission recommendations, ordinance number four, seven series, amend city chapter code seven, right-of-way regulations, and chapter 11 land use regulations, accept to introduce.
Yeah, tonight, we're looking at introducing ordinance number four. There's two components of it. Chapter seven deals with small cells within the right-of-way. The other component of it is chapter 11, which is on private property. Small cell technology is essentially the wireless technology for cellphone carriers in a much smaller scale in terms of how far their reach is. A lot of the language was a requirement of this last legislative session from the state. We are allowed to, or required to allow those facilities within the right-of-way. We have to have a right-of-way management ordinance, which this is what we have in front of you this evening. And then the fees and such are stated in the legislative ordinance as well. So, tonight, we are looking to introduce this, and then it would be effective basically January 1, in line with the state legislature requirements.
Do I have a motion to introduce ordinance four?
So moved.
Ordinance number four has been introduced by Councilmember Hanson. Ordinance number 4A, seven series.
4A is the summary publication, so we would be asking the council to introduce that as well, so we don't have to publish the entire ordinance, just the summary of the ordinance.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Been introduced by Councilmember Knopfler. Resolution 2017-72, order of feasibility report, surface and utility improvement, Front Street. Resolution 2017-72, order feasibility report, surface and utility improvement, Front Street, public improvement 378.
This evening, we're asking the council to order in the feasibility report for Front Street. That's over by the dam. If you recall, this past summer in 2017 construction season, we placed fill in that area kind of in preparation of the Trunk Highway 27 project that's to occur in 2019. We'd like to conduct the feasibility report for that stretch so we can reconstruct that road over in that area and then potentially assess those costs out to the adjacent property owners.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Gushak to adopt resolution 2017-72. Any discussion?
Well, Mr. President, I'm just wondering if the timing is right on that. We got a lot of questions on what's going to happen in that area over the next few years, right? Bridge?
I think the bridge is further down.
The bridge would potentially be further down. The plan with this is this would potentially be the detour route for 27. So right now, what MINDOT has said, if we don't find any funding for the bridge, they're still going forward with the 27 project in 19.
That's part of that whole project concept would be asking the state to delay that while we explore the bridge.
We did ask, and they've said that, you know, while you're still trying to find funds for it, we're moving, the state's still moving forward with the 27. So they're going forward with it being a 2019 project. We want to be prepared so that in the event that it does occur in 2019, that we can still have the traffic going through downtown as opposed to being rerouted outside of town. So we've kind of identified First Avenue Southeast as the detour route to try to keep the local traffic as close as possible. Otherwise, if we don't do that portion of it, then they would grow out all the traffic basically up to Highway 10 and around over to 371 and back through. So. Liked the sound of that better myself anyway, but.
I can't believe the state said no to that.
They did.
You can't believe that?
That's easy to believe that.
Well, yeah, it's easy to believe it, but it's ridiculous.
Part of it's listed as utilities, but the Front Street part doesn't have any need for utilities, does it?
Well, part of it is, there's some water main on Front and then Wood Street going to the north there. We've got about half a block worth of utilities, sewer and water in that stretch that we would be reconstructing as well. The Front Street portion of the sanitary, we wouldn't need to reconstruct. We'd be actually abandoning that in place there. But the water, we would still keep that over there.
If that's going to be the detour, will they pay for that? Will they pay for any portion of it as part of the project?
No, unfortunately.
So we're just asking for feasibility study right now.
We're asking for the feasibility study, yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call or roll plays.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2017-73, 2018 levy, adopt. John?
Again, as you heard in the informational meeting, our levy has a multitude of components. The general fund portion to balance, our EDA, fire relief, parking, and then debt service amounts. So we're looking at a final levy of, with those combined together, as well as the addition of a market value based referendum levy for the library in a total of $3,743,750.
What is the wish of the council on resolution 2017-73?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Lundberg to adopt resolution 2017-73. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call or roll plays.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2017-74, 2018 housing redevelopment authority levy.
All right, this is another component of funds that we levy for. These are utilized for housing redevelopment program. This is based on state statutes. There's a certain percentage of the total market valuation that we can levy for the housing HRA. So it's actually $77,000 this year that we're eligible to levy for.
What's the wish of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Knopfela, second by Councilmember Hanson to approve resolution 2017-74. Discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call or roll plays.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2017-75, 2018 budget and capital improvement plan, adopt. John?
Yes, before you, it's a resolution for our budget. As we've discussed, these are all the components of these different funds that we've, that we're budgeting for this year. If you're looking at it in comparison from year to year, the, one of the big outliers is going to be that EDA is now being budgeted for. In the past, it was, there were very little activity that we had going in and out of the fund. So it wasn't something that we had allocated as budgeting for. But now with our business subsidy agreement, it's something that we need to do. And we have a lot more activity in that fund that we're utilizing the dollars for. So it's nice to now have it included into this approved budget. It's, total is going to be over $11 million. It's going to be a slight increase from the previous year. But as discussed in the informational meeting, we're seeing the market valuation coming up as well. So your actual tax rates potentially are going to decrease. So the amount that you pay to the city relative to your home or business valuation, you could potentially see a decrease. Doing a very good job in terms of maintaining the costs. There are plenty of things within these budgets that are, our costs are expenses that are just going up because of inflation that we can't avoid. So in areas that we can reduce or try to keep stable, we've done that. So these also include the capital improvement plan purchases that we have for 2018. So those are incorporated as likely transfers out towards those purchases. So those funds would get transferred out and go into the respective equipment funds for the different departments or budgets, and then those purchases could be made.
What's the wish of the council on resolution 2017-75? Got a motion by Councilmember Liljagren, second by Councilmember Lundberg to approve resolution 2017-75. Any discussion?
If we approve this, this does not mean that we've approved the garbage.
This does not mean that we've approved the garbage rates. This does not mean that we've approved the water rates. This does not mean that we've approved the golf course rates. Those are only assumptions that were used in planning for this budget. Again, I'll reiterate, I don't think even if you made those changes in reducing them from what was projected specifically in garbage, that they're going to impact this budget where I would recommend that we need to make an amendment at this time. If it is going to be a major impact over the course of next year, we can assess it. We can always amend budgets appropriately if need be to accommodate, you know, major changes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call or roll plays.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2017-76, declare certain properties surplus.
Down in the engineering department, we have two main printers. One is a large scale printer. The other one is the one that we use most of the time for 11 by 17 prints. Unfortunately, the Xerox that we had down there quit working on us. We had to purchase a new printer for the engineering department. The toner that we've got listed here is surplus equipment. It fits the Xerox, it does not fit the new printer that we have. So we're looking at declaring this surplus and then selling those at the appropriate locations to try to recoup some of the city's funds.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2017-76.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Alderman Hercock for approval. Any discussion? None, resolution, call or roll plays.
Liljagren?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Carries.
Anyone got any reports? Announcements?
I was with one, and I was in the public share market at a meeting this evening at 5:00, 5:30. And I stopped over there just to see some EDA dollars in action. The place was packed. They were dragging in chairs from everywhere. So there's a lot of people, a lot of interest, a lot of excitement. And I think it could be a good project for our community to talk about how they have to sell some more shares. I think they're at 243 right now, they said. And so a lot of inertia behind that. And I have some positive vibes about it. Also, John, you might have received the email also regarding some of the governor forums that have been taking place. I'll be careful who you support. Some of them are misleading about LGA and talking about stopping LGA. And you heard what John had to say, what that would do to our budget. We've discussed that in the past of what that would do. It would decimate us. So please pay attention and keep an eye on that. There's a couple more forums down there, I think, Wednesday. I'm not going to be able to make it down there. I don't think you're going.
I'll look into it. Yeah, as a reminder of the budget that was approved tonight, almost 50% of the total revenue that we generate for the general fund comes from local government aid. So imagine if that went away as some of these candidates are proposing that they think it's a complete waste. I would disagree with them that we are putting that, those funds to really good use in our community that are helping with public safety, with parks and recreation, with snow removal, with streets. It's, you name it, those funds can be used for our general fund purposes. So, and as you've seen, we did receive a $75,000 increase. And we're doing a very modest increase to the total amount of the general fund budget and potentially a decrease in your actual tax rate. So I think we're doing our part into balancing out what we can, you know, sustain in costs and putting those funds to good use, so.
They definitely work hand in hand, LGA and.
And property taxes.
Our property taxes. And our legislators, I believe, were supportive of LGA for us.
Yes.
I thank them for that.
Any other announcements? Hearing none, 8:18, we'll adjourn.
Go inside and warm up.